I am calling this meeting to order. Could we get the row call, Terry?
Arjana Aliyar?
Here.
Lisa Ramon?
Here.
John Masden?
Here.
Kyle Maderman?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Here. Will you join me in a moment of silent prayer or private reflection? Will you now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe there's a need for an executive session. Am I correct?
You're correct.
So now, we do have a call to the public. I would call up Jaclyn Reese to the podium.
Looks like I picked a great night to come. Thank you, Board, for listening to me. And first of all, thank you to the teachers of our district that put forth every day everything you guys got for our kids. It's greatly appreciated. I am here to address a few concerns I have with the district in whole, not so much individual teachers or individual staff. I am going to say that I sadly left this district October 1st of last year after being with the district for eight years. I cried on my way out the door. Some of you have seen me, some of you have worked with me, some of you know me. I did special needs transportation and I was a sports activity driver for my time here. I am here because over my time with Lake Havasu District, I have seen lots of things that disturbed me as an employee, as a parent. First of all, I do not believe that your classified staff get the recognition that they deserve. I feel that there is bullying within every facility here from the parent, or sorry, from the adults on down to the children. And if you want to correct a bullying issue, you have to start at the top. I have spoke with several people throughout the district and I know that there is bullying within each site. It doesn't matter if it's district office, Havasu High. Transportation, the high school, there is bullying amongst the staff. And these kids see this, and that is disheartening. I had a teacher tell my student, my student, sorry, my own son. Sorry, wasn't expecting to be first, that it wasn't her problem. Boo hoo, suck it up. That teacher is no longer within the district, that I have found out. But still, who gives a right for an adult to say that to a child? That really upset me. Second, you currently have, if I am correct, 65 open positions for classified staff. If your classified staff all left, how would your teachers run your schools? Can you answer that? Because honestly, without the classified staff, without the paraprofessionals, without the office ladies, without the janitors, the custodians, the maintenance people, we are all supposed to be a team. And it's not. Havasu is no longer a team within its own staff itself. Mr. Murray, when I left, I called and emailed to sit down and talk with you about reasons for me leaving. I never got a return phone call. I never got a return email. Mr. Masden, you posted on Facebook concerns about the district and what could be done better. I sent you a message and I said, hey, I would like to sit down and talk to you to address some concerns. I never got a reply. Is it because I'm no longer an employee or is it, or what? This is what I'm talking about. Communication has to come from administration all the way down if you want to see growth and improvement in your children. I cried when I left. Eight years I devoted everything I had to this place, to transportation. I see witch hunts on Facebook when a driver doesn't do something right or when a teacher doesn't support a student in a right way. Where's the district to back them up? And if a coworker reaches out and says something, that coworker is then hushed and silenced by their supervisor. Oh, we can't do that. Oh, you can't do that. Don't do that. So what, we're not allowed to stick up for our own fellow coworkers? We can, yes, it's freedom of speech. We can say what we want. But can we do it without coming in and having repercussions from work? You guys need to work as you're going into budget better, or as you're going into your budget seasons with all the cuts on the table, and you really need to think about your classified employees. I left because I couldn't afford to live as a single mother off of a bus driver's wages and I definitely couldn't go get a second job because of the CDL federal laws. Consider it. You guys want to grow this district and make it better? Think about the little people that make the district go around, not just the big people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Any comments? All right, let's move on to spotlights and recognition. We have Carol Nowakowski from the Lake Havasu City Education Association. Is she here? Yes, there you are.
Good evening, President Ron, members of the Board, Superintendent Stone, and Directors. So as if you aren't paying close attention, HCR 2039 has passed the House floor with the required two-three vote, which actually it was three-fourths vote. So that's for you. The 45 yes votes did include a yes vote from our LD5 legislators, Biesucci and Cobb. We are one step closer to lifting that limit on the aggregate expenditure limit, also known as the AEL. But unfortunately, the Senate did not review the sister bill of SCR 1022 today simultaneously. So we wait. Could it possibly be heard tomorrow, Thursday, on the Senate floor? Possibly. But if not, we will still wait until the HR bill hits the Senate floor since next week is the crossover week. Today is a movement in the right direction for public education, but I continue to struggle with the multiple bills continuing to be passed out of committee as either unfunded or underfunded mandates on public education, as well as bills containing language which continue to strip what is established by our elected governing board, local control. I would encourage you to review such bills as SB 1211, HB 2315, HB 2370, HB 2448, as well as others, and reach out to our local legislators to have a discussion on how these will impact our community and our district. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Carol. Next up, we are going to recognize some student achievement. LHUSD's K-12 National Board Certified Teachers. Go ahead. Watch your step.
So tonight, we are very excited to recognize five of our staff who have either received National Board Certification for the first time or they have maintained their certificate over time. What we would like to do is, as I read your name and talk about you a little bit, if you would all come up and stand here and wait and our K-12 Foundation has something for you when we are all finished. So the first person we are going to start with is Carol Nowakowski. So Carol has worked for LHUSD since 1994. She has taught at Thunderbolt and Ora Grande Classical Academy. Mrs. Nowakowski earned her National Board Certification in Early Adolescent Mathematics. She's a teacher leader and educational advocate who continually supports the Ora Grande community and the Lake Havasu Unified School District. She is relentless in her pursuit of improving herself to benefit her students academically, as well as socially and emotionally. During her prep time, Carol can frequently be found in other teachers' classrooms, assisting staff members, talking to students, and supporting Ora Grande's mission of training the hearts and minds of young people. Congratulations, Carol. Our second person this evening is Jamie Hammer. So Jamie has taught at Jamaica Elementary School since 2007. She earned her National Board Certification in Reading Language Arts Early and Middle Childhood. Jamie is an exceptional teacher and leader for our district. She is a compassionate teacher who places her students' needs above all each day. She works to both support students as well as challenge them consistently to be their best. She's a leader who is focused on building an exceptional learning environment in her classroom at Jamaica and across all of LHUSD. Congratulations, Jamie. Our next honoree is Norma Zink.
Norma has worked for LHUSD since 2002. She has taught at Smoke Tree and Havasu High Elementary Schools. Norma earned her National Board Certification in Literacy, Reading Language Arts, Early and Middle Childhood. She is described as a team player and a natural mentor. She is gifted with the ability to connect with and build relationships with all students, especially those that may be overlooked by some. She asks great questions and helps students develop deep, meaningful thinking skills. Congratulations, Norma.
Our next honoree is Courtney Zampona.
So Courtney has worked for LHUSD since 2012. She has taught at Ora Grande and Starline Elementary Schools. Courtney earned her Certification in Literacy, Reading Language Arts, Early and Middle Childhood in 2017 and maintained her certificate for another five years this year. She is an exceptional educator who is reflective in her practice and faces every challenge with a passion and perseverance which ignites learning for her students. She embraces new educators and supports them by modeling and scaffolding best practices so they too can be highly effective in their craft. Congratulations, Courtney.
And our final honoree tonight is Kristi Olsen.
Kristi has worked for LHUSD since 1992. She has taught at Smoke Tree, Thunderbolt, Ora Grande, and Nautilus and is currently serving as the district's professional learning coach. Kristi is Mojave County's and LHUSD's first National Board Certified Teacher. She holds a certificate as a middle childhood generalist. She earned her first certificate in 2002 and has renewed her certificate in 2012 and again this year in 2022. Mrs. Olsen's list of accomplishments is both extensive and impressive. Kristi could have become the first and only NBCT in Lake Havasu, but instead, she supported others as they worked to become accomplished teachers. Kristi has inspired other teachers, including many in this room, to be the best teachers and leaders they can be. Her impact on student achievement and dedication to LHUSD is unmatched. Thank you and congratulations, Kristi.
And now I'm going to turn it over to our K-12 Foundation who has a presentation to make.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janice Dump and I serve as the chairman for the Board of the K-12 Foundation. And tonight, we are here to offer some scholarships to the new and renewing National Board Certified Teachers that were just presented, so thank you.
Before we move on, I just want to kind of just notice that those of you who have been watching the board meetings probably the last few months have started to know that we've been doing a lot of staff and teacher recognition at these board meetings. So I'd like to thank Dr. Stone for kind of instigating that and keeping that going. My computer went funny. Okay, I can look at that for a second. So next up, we have Consent Agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I'll second.
John Masden?
Yes.
Kyle Maderman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Arjana Aliyar?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes. I don't see that there are any discussion items for number five, so I'm going to go ahead and move to action items. So 6.1 Student Achievement, HMH Intro Literature Textbook Adoption for Grades 9 through 12.
Mr. President and Governing Board, LHUSD expanded Core Knowledge and CKLA Amplify Curriculum to all K-8 schools in 2122. The last textbook adoption for English at the high school level was in 2006. The LHUSD Textbook Adoption Committee unanimously recommends the Houghton-Mifflin-Hart Courts Into Literature as the approved textbook for adoption starting in 2223. The Havasu Unified School District is committed to providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum, ensuring that all students have access to high-quality materials that support our mission and vision, are aligned to standards, and prepare students for their future. A committee of stakeholders reviewed three options, which were on display for 60 days in the district boardroom as required by policy and statute. The committee especially considered how the textbook provided instructional support to new teachers. HMH Into Literature stood out in terms of usability for teachers and students, differentiation for students, inclusion of research-based instructional practices, and open parent communication. The cost to purchase seven years of student and teacher materials, digital licenses, and professional development is not to exceed $250,000, including shipping and handling. By purchasing over the course of seven years, we receive a discount in the amount of 20%. The district will utilize ESAR and other appropriate funds for completing this purchase. This item has been reviewed by the Business Department. The quote was attached in your materials and there is a presentation to follow.
So do we want to see the presentation? Let's go.
So I am delighted to start this evening's presentation and I first just want to say that I am so impressed by the involvement of the committee, the community members who came to be a part of all of this and really give us their feedback and go through the process. The first part of this presentation is simply the policies and statutes that align to the way we adopt textbooks or curriculum here. The rest of the presentation will be made by our Director of Student Achievement. And I'm not going to repeat my part of the presentation for math because it is exactly the same. But again, both committees, math and English, did an amazing job of really looking through all of those materials, digging down into them, asking students what they thought, and getting all of that feedback prior to this recommendation that comes to you tonight. So we're going to start with ARS 15271, which is the statute as to how we adopt textbooks. It clearly states that the governing board has to approve courses of study, basic textbooks, and all units recommended for credit. And the piece about the textbook review and selection be open to the public. Our Board Policy, IGD, I won't read all of this to you, but it is certainly available for the public that wants to review. Speaks, again, it mirrors what the statute says in that all of these are subject to Board approval. Board Regulation, IJJR, really speaks to that piece of textbook selection committees and what they are guided by as they're going through all the resources. Some of the pieces that they're recommended that they provide a background of information that motivates students to examine their own attitudes and behavior, to comprehend their duties, responsibilities, rights, and privileges as participating citizens in our society, and to make intelligent judgments in their daily lives. The other piece in there that I just wanted to note is that we want our students to develop the practice of critical analysis. Policy AD is the educational philosophy and school district mission. The Board worked very, very hard on this to ensure that all of our students were receiving an education that nurtured them to their fullest potential. They recognize the fact that this isn't an independent thing that just happens in their school. It happens as they are out in the community, with parents, other resources in the community that support our schools as well. So we invite all stakeholders to work with us. And of course, that mission of engaging each student with a focus on scholarship, character, and humanity so that all students may graduate with the academic and social skills necessary to become responsible citizens and contributing members of society. Policy IA is our curriculum philosophy. The piece here, and again, the Board took a great deal of time to define all these features, but they want our curriculum to feature high academic standards so students become critical thinkers and problem solvers using knowledge, reason, and logic. They want all subjects within the curriculum for us to understand that they're interrelated and critical to the development of each individual student. And the emphasis is placed on research-based instructional and management strategies that enhance improved academic performance. And finally, just to give a little bit about what our context is right now. So as Mrs. Vestadego said, we adopted Core Knowledge for all of our K-8 schools. That is developed by Edie Hirsch and he was really interested in creating an informed citizenry that had a common foundation of knowledge within which they could have critical analysis, have dialogue with each other. And Core Knowledge finishes its sequence at eighth grade. So there is no opportunity to adopt that moving forward. The reason is, the curriculum is very rigorous and provides students with a solid foundation, but they're then expected to be ready to pursue higher academic coursework, engaging in critical thinking and dialogue in all of their content areas. We also have Singapore Math, which is the conceptual, pictorial, and abstract. And then what is it that will move us from that, which also ends at a young age because it believes it provides a very solid foundation, to more rigorous math that they may be interested in? And then we also have Ora Grande Classical Academy, based on the Hillsdale College curriculum, and that has the addition of virtues and a classical instructional approach. That is where we stand today. And now I am excited to have Mrs. Vestadego come and talk about the recommendation for English.
Again, I don't think I can click to you. So thank you to Mrs. Walter for clicking. I just want to start, so the people that you see, the names that you see on the screen are the members of the Stakeholder Committee for the ELA adoption. It is a broad representation that included both families and students. We also made sure that we had people representing career and technical education. We had teachers that serve special education students and that served English learners. We also made sure that we had someone from the middle school to really give that idea of what our students were coming with. This committee started last year and so they've been working for over a year to make this happen. This started by looking at three vendors and was narrowed down along the way. And then I also want to thank Ginny Sotner, who really led this committee and did a lot of the legwork in order to make this happen. So one of the tasks in order to be compliant and transparent is to make sure that we are getting feedback from community members about the curriculum. And so our links to information about the curriculum was posted online. There were QR codes, so people didn't even have to leave their house in order to give us feedback. And then we also sent emails to stakeholders once a month to give a deeper dive. So you know, it's more than just the textbook that we're adopting. We're adopting all of the ancillary materials. And so we wanted to make sure stakeholders knew what the package provided. So some of those emails to stakeholders looked at what type of parent communication was with the curriculum, what the lesson plan resources looked like, how to differentiate and scaffold for different students, what the ed report comparisons, and that compares different textbooks and how they measure up with one another. Our stakeholder meetings were open to the public. There was one person from the public who is not on the committee who came to that. And then we asked in numerous settings for feedback, including newspaper, school board meetings, on the radio, social media. In total, we had eight visitors who came and reviewed the curriculum. So we really did want to make sure that we were aiming to get as much feedback about the curriculum as we could. So when we're thinking about adopting to a curriculum, our two direct audience groups are going to be students and teachers. And so really to think about, who are our students? And so we're first going to talk about this ELA adoption, but then we will talk about the math adoption, which supports Thunderbolt as well. So our enrollment at Lake Havasu High School is 1,780 students, 33% free and reduced lunch. This is a snapshot of what our students are going on to do after high school. And so really thinking about how is what we adopt, going to prepare students who are going on to university, going students, preparing students who are going to a two-year or trade school, preparing students for the military, and preparing students who are going into service or directly into the workforce. So we really needed to take that lens of what we were adopting. And then when we think about Thunderbolt, their enrollment is 867 students and they have 43% free and reduced lunch. The other audience that textbooks directly serve are English teachers. And this is a current snapshot now. And what we see is we have some teachers with very little experience. We just had a new teacher join the English department within, well, they'll start next week. And so we see that we have some teachers with four to 10 years' experience and then we have some veteran teachers. What we also need to understand is that more and more often, we are not, we're getting two types of teachers in some cases. We have teachers that may have deep English knowledge. They may have English expertise and not have teaching skills for K through 12. Or we may get people who want to work with children may have that teaching pedagogy background, but they're not English experts. And so really making sure that we have a curriculum that can support our most veteran teachers to our most novice teachers. When we were adopting this and we talked about the words guaranteed and viable, but I just want to point out, they're maybe not words that you see every day. But a guaranteed and viable curriculum means two things. The fact that it's guaranteed assures us that the specific content is taught in specific courses and at specific grade levels. That's the beauty of Core Knowledge. We know what our students are going to come to us with. We want to continue that. We want to say an LHUSD grad is going to leave us with this set of knowledge. The fact that it's viable indicates that there's enough instructional time to make sure that it's actually taught. So the purpose of English, when we think about what English is, and I highlighted what I think is important from this. Reading and writing provides students with the concept, skills, and habits of mind necessary for success in school, the workplace, and the community. So it is a way that we understand people's lived experiences and that we can communicate with others through our words, whether those are spoken, written. And so that is really our area of focus. The last time that we adopted English curriculum was in two thousand and six. And so when we think about that adoption, although the literature that we're going to use now or in an adoption for a hundred years from now still may include Beowulf, Shakespeare, the classics. The tools that were supporting teachers in two thousand and six probably look very different. I think two thousand and six was like the dawn of Facebook. So it looks very different than tools that we're now using. It may have been a better time in two thousand and six. But so, but it looks different than the tools that teachers are using in two thousand and twenty-two. I think, and Mrs. Gray can tell me, that probably came with some C D roms. Those are not necessarily tools. I don't think our computer towers still have C D ROM drives. And so what are the tools that we're using to support both students and teachers? So one of the goals is to make sure that it's our curriculum is research-based, that we know that if we use it, what the intended outcome is going to happen. And so this program cultivates engaged, independent readers, writers, speakers, listeners and thinkers through high-interest, rigorous texts and meaningful, connected learning activities that sharpen students' higher-level skills. So what we teach students is not their end game in literacy, right? Like, these are the skills that they're taking out into the real world. And so the research points to that being supported through this program. The other thing that we really enjoyed about H M H, and one of the strong reasons that it was selected, was its ability to connect with families. And as a previous high school teacher, that's something that we're maybe not as used to. I give you the syllabus on the first day of school. I send you a few emails and I'm good. But that is certainly not what families are asking for now. They really want to know, what is the literature my students reading? I want to read it with them. I want to talk with them about it. We know that that's changing and we're actually very excited about that, that we're returning to having those conversations around the dinner table of what students are learning in school, they're applying their knowledge. And so H M H comes with a family room. There are videos, there are specific supports. So if you're not understanding, well, why are students writing this? How can I help? There are ways and the teachers can, I mean, everything's there. And then the teachers can share out specific tools that families may be interested in viewing. In addition, so here's just an example of what the family room looks like. And you can see there is some skills. So how do I, this is a science example, how do I work on science with my student? How do I help them write an essay? And then there's also supports for the the actual literature. This is an example of what, how the texts, how the units are organized. What we liked about this is there are a series of mid-length texts or shorter texts. And those are what would be, the units would be built upon. But then there's also some alternatives. And so if I have a student that we still want to go with this theme, this is against all odds. This is a theme about survival. But I have a student who possibly their reading level, their lexile level is lower, but I want them to have the same sort of concepts that can be assigned to that student or a specific group. One of the things to notice is there's a mentor text. Mentor texts are meant to, this is what English writing will look like. Let's use it as a mentor, a sample. And this is where some grammar can be taught, writing can be taught, and so that it is embedded within the text. It also, every unit has an essential question. This essential question is something.
What does it take to survive a crisis?
Thank you, thank you, young person. I appreciate you with the young eyes. What does it take to survive a crisis? So students are engaged from the beginning of what does this look like? What am I thinking about? And it drives all of the instruction. And so the the literature is wrapped around that idea. I'm ready to go. And so then there's also some flexible short reads. So they have the the things that they read as a class, but then they can do some shorter assignments and work in groups. There's also then longer reads. So this, this, again, thinking about survival, one of the choices is night. And so thinking about, well, what does it mean to survive through the Holocaust? What is that experience like? And then there are the writing assignments that are connected to that. So how can I write about this unit that I've just learned about? There's different types of writing. The focus is on narrative, expository. Yeah, I was looking at you, Tanya. And argumentative, thank you. And so really making sure that we're hitting those different types of writing prompts that match the literature. And so this is a short video. One of the things we really liked about this is it is, I'll let it talk.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
So one of the things we know is ensuring that students are able to engage with on-level texts when they're reading below grade level is very important. And what happens so often is we don't have enough scaffolds. We may be able to have some with sentence stems, but really to make sure that we have a wide variety. So if you have an English learner that they come to class with minimal English proficiency, they're still able to engage on some level. The other thing is this text can be read to the student. So for our students who struggle with visual processing, there's alternative ways for the students to work with the text. So when we looked at, and we met a number of times, when we looked at why we were looking to select H M H, the stakeholder feedback is shown above. And so, again, differentiation, family communication, integrated online and paper platform, engaging text, student interest, rigor, instructional support for writing and grammar, aligned to standards, student-centered learning, integration of all literacy skills, easy-to-read student data, ongoing progress tracking and assessment reports encourages a variety of instructional strategies, including peer interaction, practicing those skills that we're teaching them, and annotation and note-taking features. The reality is for many students going on, that working in a world where they're going to annotate and note-take, whether it's on paper or digitally, is something that they need. Here is the cost over time. We do have a twenty percent savings by adopting over the course of seven years. And so what we see is for the digital licenses, it is a cost of approximately a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars divided by seven years. That's twenty-four thousand dollars a year or sixteen dollars per student per year. The hardcover textbooks that we are getting will be getting a class set for each teacher's room. And so that cost we see as, for those hardcover texts, four thousand three hundred dollars per year. And then the teacher resources works out to roughly two hundred and sixty-three dollars each year. And so although the price, whenever I look at textbooks, makes makes me a little warm, the reality is when we boil it down to per-year, per-student price, when we think about the inputs that our students need to learn, they're they're actually very reasonable. So anticipated next steps. We will work on selecting units of instruction. There is, so when we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, we need to take all of what's offered and turn it into something that is guaranteed and viable, making sure that we're not over-asking teachers to teach what can't be fit and making sure that we know these are the skills and this is the knowledge that students will get in each year. Developing a scope and sequence and pacing guide for each course. Working with a subcommittee to select novels. The adoption that you see does not include novels. Typically, we have two novels that are taught each school year. And so we will be working with a subcommittee that is inclusive of parents, teachers, administrators, students to work on selecting those novels. Differentiating honors coursework, identifying technology tools. As we're working through the the current adoption with C K L A and E L A that's supporting Core Knowledge, we really do see more technology that's being asked to be used from about sixth grade up. And we know that this program, and really all programs at this point, they, it can be accelerated with the use of technology. Creating professional development for teachers. We do not expect that we are just going to say, here's your books, have at it. That is not going to create the change. And so making sure that we are supporting teachers as they use this and then supporting and evaluating the implementation process. We have implemented over the past two years, and that's something that this team, while they're looking at new adoptions, we didn't just say, done with Singapore, done with Core Knowledge. We are working pretty consistently to look at all of those adoptions and evaluate our implementation success and find out how we can do better and better support both students and teachers. That is it for my presentation.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve six point one as presented.
And I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is there anything that we need to worry about in any of this?
So it depends on what you're worried about. But we know, we, here's what I believe about public education and a governing board. We know what our our communities' concerns are and we talk about that. And so everything that we do, we will communicate with families. That is really been what we have seen at the middle school. There have been some families that very classical, traditional pieces of literature they're concerned with. And and that's really been since the beginning of time. We know that we're aware, we understand that parents may ask for alternative assignments if if it's in opposition to their personal beliefs. Board policy points to that.
So if Nicole Cohen were sitting here, she'd say yes?
I would hope Nicole Cohen should say yes. We have really answered, to me, questions that she posed.
I actually took the opportunity, because I came early today, to pick up one of the books and take a quick look at it. It looks good.
We, we worked really hard to answer questions that people have.
To kind of pick up on what John said, I think we all feel that community involvement is very important. I know we had two board members, board member Niederman and Roman on the committee. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on how you feel like, you know, how it was, how the how the discussion went as far as community involvement.
I'll let Kyle go first if he has something to say.
I would have liked to seen more than eight people respond and actually come in and have seen the textbooks from the community. But from the responses that we did receive, I would, everybody was from out of the gate almost unanimous comparing the two books. It was actually impressive how much the teachers really liked the curriculum and liked the material.
Yeah, I, just to touch on that, I mean, it was a unanimous vote. And in that community or committee, there were a wide variety of backgrounds and points of view represented there. There were just a lot of people from different walks of life in addition to kind of the people that you would expect to to care about English curriculum. So I I feel confident that this, that what we're approving will have broad appeal and that it's also adjustable over time in response to community needs.
And I think that's what I'm getting at is I think we can expect when we're talking about the selecting novels, that it'll be the same approach where we have community, staff, all the same involvement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? I think we're ready for a vote.
Arciana Iar?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Eric Aran?
Yes. Before we move on, I'd like to thank Ms. Sotners. Could you stand for us for a second? And also, is there anybody else here, either staff, faculty, community or parents who participated in this? Please stand, yes. Get recognized. And now you can officially say, phew. All right, we are moving on to math. So let me read this. Send Gage Learning Big Ideas textbook adoption for grades six gifted in grades seven through twelve.
I'll just stay here. Mr. President and Governing Board. In two thousand and nineteen, the board adopted Singapore Math for grades K through six. Textbooks were last adopted for secondary mathematics in two thousand and eight. After careful consideration, the L H U S D Mathematics Textbook Adoption Committee recommends Send Gage Learning Big Ideas Math as the approved textbook for implementation starting in twenty-two, twenty-three for sixth grade gifted and grades seven through twelve. The Cavessy Unified School District is committed to a guaranteed and viable curriculum, ensuring that all students have access to high-quality materials that support our mission and vision, are aligned to standards and prepare students for their future. A committee of stakeholders reviewed three options, which were on display for sixty days in the district boardroom as required by policy and statute. The committee especially considered how the textbook provided instructional support to new math teachers. Send Gage Learning's Big Ideas stood out on its ability to provide immediate feedback, connect math to real-world STEM examples, build self-confidence in learner mindsets and share video supports for each lesson. The cost for purchasing seven years of student and teacher materials, licenses and professional development is not to exceed three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, including shipping and handling. By purchasing over the course of seven years, we are receiving a discount in the amount of twenty-five percent. Estor grant funding is the intended funding source for this purchase. This item has been reviewed by the business department. There was a quote attached to your materials and there's a presentation to follow.
Can we do the presentation? Thank you.
Perfect. So with math, thank you, Mrs. Walter. Again, our committee was very diverse. We made sure that we had parents involved. And I also forgot about the E L A committee. We did ask higher education. And so Dr. Aran got to serve multiple, some multiple purposes on this one, but making sure higher education was present. Families, elementary school teachers, administrators and special educators. So we wanted to make sure, again, it was peeling and then students. So students at both the middle school and the high school level. I do want to note that Larry Olson led this team and he really is the one who did all of the work behind the scenes. This team also started last school year and narrowed down their focus and met with vendors multiple, multiple times in order to get to where we are today. So we talked about in the last one who our students were. And now thinking about our math teachers, we have teachers, we have as many teachers or more teachers who have zero to three years' experience as we do veteran teachers. And so what we're seeing, again, as our most veteran teachers are leaving or becoming administrators, I don't know what's in the water for math teachers. And so as we see that, we we know that we're getting teachers who may not have the same level of math supports as our outgoing teachers. as our outgoing teachers are. And so really making sure that this textbook can be used by our most veteran teachers and by our most novice teachers. So the purpose of math, when we think about it, mathematics teachers have an eye to the future. Knowing and communicating how the mathematics learned will relate to students' future work or education. So being able to take those math processes and apply it to something new, apply those problem-solving strategies to what they're doing next or what they're doing differently. Our current curriculum is McDougal-Lightel. It was adopted in 2008. And again, so while math doesn't necessarily change, the supports that both students need and teachers need, for a very long time, I know that the math teachers have really asked for an assessment tool. And that is something that in the older curriculum, they really did not have access to. One of the things that was most appealing about Send Gage Learning Big Ideas Math is it was really embedded in the highest-impact teaching strategies. So we know when we're trying to move the needle on student learning, anything with an effect size of .4 and higher gives you more than a year's worth of student growth. And so Big Ideas, direct instruction, .59. Spaced practice, .6. Feedback, .7. Teacher clarity, .75. Classroom discussion, .82. So we don't always think about classroom discussion in math, but really, students talking about how did they come to the mathematical answers that they came to and why? And what looks different and what's the same? So here's all that Send Gage Big Ideas offers. They offer a lot. One of the things that stands out, in addition to all of the resources, the assessments, the parent communication, one of the things that sticks out, the publisher of this textbook, Larson &amp; Boswell, are very well-known in the world of mathematics education. One of the things I think, when we talk about teacher clarity, is it's called Laura's Notes. So before every chapter, the author talks about her thinking as she's writing it. And so thinking about teachers who maybe they're really developing their mathematical skills, or even if I'm comfortable teaching Algebra 1, 2, am I quite as comfortable teaching geometry or Algebra 3, 4? That teacher clarity that I know why I'm teaching it, I know the steps to take, is very important. It also is embedded in STEAM videos, making that application of math to real-world practices. And we'll, we'll watch a quick video in just a second. So like HMH, Big Ideas has family letters. And so this just talks about what their student is doing and then what it looks like in practice. And again, these are high school students. So really just cluing parents into, this is what we're doing. I know, I asked my child, what are you doing? He does math. I say, great, and does it. But here, it gives some parents some language that they can use so they can talk to their students about what they're doing and just letting them know what their child might be expecting. And then this is the video, so this is the STEM ideas that are really embedded in Big Ideas. It's really great to have all these like National Geographic people.
It's just a dramatic pause.
I know. Nope. And if it's, so again, hmm, hmm, it's gonna happen. Thank you. This is a lot of hard work that Mrs. Walter is doing so we can see this amazing video.
So we can explore math?
We can explore math in a real-world context.
Before you go to bed tonight, eat one half teaspoon of this.
No, not this.
Skip, skip.
Feel like this is math?
So we travel on these small canoes.
What a biologist tries to do is understand life.
I am a biologist and also I am a scientific researcher.
I'm a large carnivore ecologist.
I am a deep sea ecologist.
Geothermal scientist.
Astronomer.
Nuclear engineer.
Doctor candidate at Howard University.
Assistant professor of wildlife ecology.
Archaeologist.
Labologist.
Cultural anthropologist.
Visual storyteller.
Graduate student at Cornell University.
Photographer.
Astrophysicist.
Archaeologist.
Co-director of the UC Center.
Philharmonic.
Archaeologist.
Archaeologist.
Biologist.
Bioarchologist.
I'm a National Geographic Explorer and I love math.
So that really was engaging and thinking about what does math look like in the real world? And how are we applying it to other sciences, other fields? The committee kept coming back to that. The student that was on the committee talked about, that was really interesting and engaging to him. And so that, that ended up being one of the things that they enjoyed. So the traditional textbook, on the pages, there's a QR code. Students can log in and then they can engage with math in different ways. There are things like tutors that can, live tutors that can support the students. There are videos that they can watch and re-watch. There's more practice if they want to do more math problems. The videos have step-by-step answers in a lot of the cases. And so I think many of us have experienced, we can do math in class and then we go home and it suddenly feels very new and different. And so really supporting the students in being, becoming proficient in their practice, that can happen at home. So the stakeholder feedback that we got for Big Ideas, it gives the students immediate feedback. Students who are working digitally are able to give answers and know right away if they're right or wrong. There are pre-made teacher lessons. So if there is a teacher that's absent, a teacher who needs that extra support, it's there. Online tutor, real-world STEM, friendly to ELL. Less language, more pictorial. And so we talk about really the idea of how are these students getting to, into the abstract thinking that happens really as they move higher in math, thinking about calculus, but really supporting them through pictures. Differentiation, pre-mid-post testing vocabulary. Grade level access from K through Algebra 2. If you are teaching, an Algebra 2 teacher, you can look at the concept and it will pull all of the lessons. You have access to the entire, all of it. But you can see the same standard or concept of what it looked like in sixth grade, what it looked like in fourth grade. So if your students aren't able to work on something, you can back it down a grade, but they're still working on directly the same concept. So they can catch students up to grade level. There's Sketchpad access along with a digital calculator. It talks about depth of knowledge and rigor. The upper-level classes that we currently have, their books have the same authors. Their questions are written in ICANN. I can solve multi-variable, multi-step equations. So everything is ICANN. DESMO is the calculator. Videos for every lesson, ACT prep. That is, right now, the state mandated test. Tiered homework. You're able to give the same homework assignment, but it might look slightly different for students with varying levels of support. Data reporting, intervention support for small groups, and PD for the life of the adoption. So this is the cost. It's $348,000 divided by seven. We're looking at approximately $50,000 per year. That comes with digital licenses, a hardback book for every student and the teacher resource package, along with professional development. And the cost per student for math curriculum is $28.99 per year. So our anticipated next steps for math is developing a scope and sequence and pacing guide, differentiating honors coursework, identifying technology tools needed for implementation, creating professional development for teachers, and supporting and evaluating the implementation process. Again, we are not just doing one and done. We will, we are doing lots of work, making sure this connects with Singapore and supporting all of our teachers as mathematics teachers. And that is it for this presentation.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt 6.2 as presented.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? I would like to say some things, but I know that a board member, Alyar, was also on the committee. Would you like to talk to how we did on the committee at all?
No, it was very well-presented and we had a tough choice selecting amongst them. And Mr. Olson, of course, was wonderful. I'll leave it to you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think in looking at it, and this is right in my wheelhouse, those of you who know me, I teach math at ASU. There were a couple of things that really stood out, especially when we had our discussions. Student engagement was one. I know for students, sometimes math is just this abstract concept over here. Oh, I'm in math class, I just have to do it. But engaging with actual, real-world things. I know a few weeks or maybe a month ago or two, the, the high school brought in Space Force to come talk with them. And that was a really unique opportunity. Some of these National Geographic things are the, are the same type of opportunity that students can have to see themselves in the future. You see yourself as, you know, the marine biologist. Oh, okay. Well, then, the marine biologist was doing the same math you were doing in high school and kind of working to go there. So that was an important piece. Another important piece was especially with, you know, our incoming teachers. It's hard to get math teachers and making sure that the curriculum was very friendly to get them started, along with the professional development piece that's available. And thirdly, the parents. The parents who were reviewing this, this was their, this was their favorite by far. All of the resources they have, because, you know, it's like their student brings home Algebra 2 and they don't know how to help. You know, like, I'm glad you're doing Algebra 2. Now go do Algebra 2. There's, you know, I, we talked about the resources, but there's a lot of resources for parents to direct their students for help. I know that this also allows them to do their homework on the bus on the way to, you know, like their games if they're athletics or theater or whatever. So a lot of great resources there. So I think, I know, you can tell I'm excited about it, but I think the group was as well.
I think they have a right to be excited about it because I picked the books up over here. I actually got here a full hour early and I looked at books. And the, the other thing that many don't know about my background is I was a substitute for one of, one of the things where people had left. We had shortage of teachers. I taught math. It's good stuff.
Yes, it is. Any other discussion?
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Eric Ryan?
Enthusiastic, yes. So I wanted to thank Mr. Olson. Would you stand? He was actually disappointed that we couldn't do this a week from today because that's Tuesday, 2/22/22. So do we have any other community members, staff and, staff and faculty, parents, kids who worked on the committee here, please stand? All right. So now we are ready to move on to student achievement. Change of course title for Sophomore English 3.4.
Mr. President and Governing Board, current English textbook series contain the following structure for English courses. Freshmen and sophomore courses feature genre-based literature. Junior English is focused on American literature and Senior English is focused on British literature. Genre-based literature may include narrative fiction, nonfiction, poetry, mythology, speeches, and biographies. These different genres prepare students to become competent writers in multiple writing styles. In order to align with the current textbook series, Lake Havasu High School is requesting to change the current course title and description of the Sophomore English class from Sophomore English 3.4 World Literature to simply Sophomore English 3.4. The description will read as follows. This course includes a review of grammar skills, the teaching of intermediate composition skills, and an examination of various literacy, literary genres that include short story, poetry, drama, nonfiction, and the novel. Emphasis in both semesters will be placed on vocabulary development, composition skills, critical reading, and critical writing skills. Honors Sophomore English 3.4 World Literature would also become Honors Sophomore English 3.4. The description will read as follows. This course includes a review of grammar skills, the teaching of intermediate composition skills, and examination of various literary genres, including the short story, poetry, drama, nonfiction, and the novel. Emphasis in both semesters will be placed on vocabulary development, composition skills, critical reading, and critical writing skills. It is a program that moves through the topics of Standard English 3.4 at an accelerated pace and includes topics not taught in other courses in the English program. Upon the adoption of the English textbook, a scope and sequence will be developed for all English courses.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve 6.3 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Eric Ryan?
Yes. We're moving on to HR. Student placement agreement for ASU nursing programs.
Mr. President, members of the board, we would like to bring forward the student placement agreement between Lake Havasu Unified School District and Arizona State University to establish a relationship between ASU and LHUSD to allow nursing students from ASU to participate in educational experiences at our sites that may qualify the ASU students for academic credit as determined by ASU. The agreement will be effective March 1st, 2022 to March 1st, 2027. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by our legal counsel.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve 6.4 as presented.
I second, and I do have a question. So this sets up a program for nurses or nursing students from ASU to shadow our school nurses? Okay.
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Absolutely, yes.
Eric Ryan?
Yes. Now it's deja vu. Human Resources Student Placement Agreement with the MCC Nursing Program.
Yes, the Student Placement Agreement between LHUSD and Mojave Community College establishes a relationship between MCC and LHUSD for MCC students to participate in educational experiences at our sites that may qualify them for academic credit as determined by MCC. The agreement will be effective March 1st, 2022 to June 1st, 2025. And this agreement was also reviewed and approved by our legal counsel.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve 6.5 as presented.
Second.
Discussion? I just want to just add that both of those agreements are very much win-win. It really helps both MCC, the students here who would have to go out of town in many places to get, you know, to get the shadowing and requirement for their nursing programs. And it does help us here too, having extra bodies and people who can help when things get busy.
Yes.
Definitely.
This is our recruitment pipeline.
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Eric Ryan?
Yes. Next up, Superintendent, selection of two Governing Board members for the 2022-2023 Budget Committee.
Mr. President, members of the board. The 2022-2023 Budget Committee is getting ready to start meeting. The first meeting will be March 2. We also have a meeting March 7 and March 23 if needed. These are held from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the library at Lake Havasu High School. At this time, you are discussing and selecting two members that will be a part of that Budget Committee.
So discussion, who would like to be on the Budget Committee?
I would. I've already, I appreciate getting the dates and times in advance, and I've already made sure that I'm available for those times if I'm selected.
If my schedule were more open, I'd say, yes, let's get it done. But I can't because my schedule's not open.
So I know, I would, I would be willing to serve. I, I was on it last year, so I just definitely want other Governing Board members to have first chance. So Archie or Kyle, yes or no?
I cannot.
Okay. Kyle, did you want to be on the committee?
I was also on the committee last year. I would love to do it this year, but the date conflicted with my current schedule, and I'm not going to be able to make it.
Okay. So.
It sounds like that makes it easier.
Yeah.
Where the people who are available. Yeah.
So are we all then in agreement? Are you good with that, John?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we'll make a motion. Let's make a motion, somebody other than me and Lisa.
I'll make a motion to nominate Dr. Eric Coran and Lisa for the Budget Committee.
I second.
Go ahead.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kyle Neederman?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Next up, Business Services, Vouchers, Student Activity Funds, and Auxiliary Funds.
Mr. President, board members, vouchers for January 2022 and student activity and auxiliary funds for December 2021 are before you tonight for your approval.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve 6.7 as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Eric, sorry, Kyle Neederman?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes. So we're moving on to informational. Does the superintendent have anything for us?
I do, thank you. First, I want to say once again, just thank you to the Student Achievement Department and all the members of those committees. Being a teacher now is harder than it's probably ever been, and we are seeing many more teachers come to the profession that don't have years of experience or necessarily been through an educational program. The resources adopted tonight will significantly support them as they work to support our students, and I also think it provides great resources for our students, obviously, and for our families to be able to support at home. So I just greatly appreciate all of their work and the board supporting that process through the entire time that we've been working over a year. The other thing I would like to mention is during the first week of February, we did have Rachel's Challenge. That whole event is really around improving school culture through building connections, hope, and resilience in our students. It can't happen without a great deal of community support. So we had community support from providing snacks and providing food and making sure that all the needs were met of the day, but also lots of community volunteers who spent the whole day working with our kids, sometimes two in three days. Lots of our teachers, our counselors, our administrators, district office staff also supported that. At the fifth, seventh, and eighth grade levels, they participate in an assembly, very moving assemblies. And then our chain reaction event is actually held at the high school, and it's for all of our sophomores. They participate in a full-day event. There's about 100 kids at a time that participate. But it was a very meaningful experience, and we are excited about continuing that and hosting it next year as well. At that time, we will also be looking at a community event, which is what the board had several years ago. It did start with a community event and more assemblies and things in schools. It's about time to redo that, so as we look to move forward for next year, we will add that community event in again. Thank you.
Any informational from Governing Board members?
I also wanted to speak a little bit about Rachel's Challenge. Thank you to the high school for supporting that. It's probably not an easy task to do that with that many students, and I specifically wanted to thank the restaurants in town. I heard one of the speakers say, you know, it's not normally a full-on catered restaurant lunch that we receive. It's normally like sack lunches and everything, which we would have been grateful for that as well. But, but the point is, one way that we show people that we love and care for them is by feeding them well, and so our students were definitely loved and cared for by our community. We had small groups for lunch, so it would be like three or four students with each adult. And in one of my groups, one of the days, we had Caesar salad, and two of the students had never had Caesar salad before. So I just say that to say, it was, I feel like it was very meaningful, and maybe lunch seems like a trivial type of thing, but I don't think it's trivial to the students. I think it really means something to them. So thank you to our community for so, for being so generous.
I also wanted to make a plug-out. We have another opportunity for recognition for staff and faculty. As a parent, I got an email today saying if there's somebody you would like to nominate for, you know, Staff Member of the Year or Teacher of the Year, that is available. So encourage any of your parents out there to respond to that email. It's a great opportunity to pat some of the people who are doing an outstanding job and going above and beyond during this time. Any other Governing Board information? Do we have any further calls to the public? All right. Any board suggestions for future agenda items? Any press media clarifying questions? Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
I'll second.
Kyle Neederman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Archana Aliar?
Yes.
Eric Coran?
Yes, we are adjourned.